Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting on August 24th, 2017. Please note that counsel is in full attendance except for Mayor Paloschek. He's doing a press conference right now, and I'm gonna take items from counsel. Everybody have anything?
I just had a request, and it was, it's gonna be for C1, and I didn't know whether to ask for it now or at the time that we do the C1.
We can talk about it at C1.
We can do it then, at C1, yeah, that's fine.
If there's no other items from counsel, I would just like to ask Mrs. Garrett to give us just a brief update on Harvey.
Harvey has intensified again this afternoon, so we've had a long few hours. Each briefing from the National Weather Service, it has intensified, so at 4:00 briefing. The landfall for a hurricane, it's considered a major hurricane, they have narrowed it down to possibly between Port Aransas and Port O'Connor. So when it comes in in that area, Victoria will be affected greatly. The weather service is using the term dire situation. So the reason the mayor is not here is he and the judge are doing a press conference at 5:00 to announce that we've enacted a mandatory evacuation for the community, for people, especially those in the low-lying areas that are flood-prone, and have structures that cannot withstand major hurricane-force winds. So they're doing that now, and so we will continue to monitor throughout the night. Our emergency management teams are in force. We've worked hard today to protect the public, so that's kind of what's going on. Again, the National Weather Service is asking all residents to pay attention to what the elected officials are telling them, and that it is a dire situation. So that's what's happened at 4:00 today, so we'll keep it up.
Thank you, thank you. All right, with that, I'd like to open up Citizens Communication. If there's any item that you wish to speak on that's not on the agenda already for a public hearing, now would be the time. All right, seeing no one, we'll close Citizens Communication and go into the ordinances and items with public hearings. We don't have any without public hearings, we have three with public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance adding Article 7 for right-of-way management and Article 8 for a design manual to Chapter 20 of the Victoria City Code, amending Section 21-82J related to historic districts to designate historical landmark districts, amending Chapter 24 to establish fees for usage of public right-of-way, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
All right, before we have any discussion, go ahead and open the public hearing. No one, let's close the public hearing, and entertain a motion.
Someone?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. Is there anything you'd like to add?
This, this is an ordinance that is in direct response to Senate Bill 1004, which is affectionately called the AT&amp;T Bill. It is to, a response to mitigate the effects of the small cell, or small nodes, cell nodes in our right-of-way. They are referred to as "small," but the maximum size is 28 cubic feet, which is, for reference, about the size of a refrigerator. So these really have the potential to impact our right-of-way. So this is the ordinance that we have drafted to respond to that. This pretty much will only apply to those types of uses in our right-of-way because it does not apply to anyone that has a franchise agreement or a license agreement with the city. And if there's any other type of utility users that want to use our right-of-way that aren't regulated by the state law and in this ordinance, we can also choose to enter into those other type of agreements, and they would not have to follow this right-of-way ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This doesn't have anything to do with the right-of-way mowing or anything like that, right?
Oh, no ma'am.
Not at all.
Okay, got it.
And the law becomes effective September 1st, that's fine, you're seeing it tonight, and you'll see it again on Tuesday night.
Okay.
No other questions or discussion? Go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, on to C2.
C2 is the first public hearing on the 2017-2018 City of Victoria tax rate on August 24th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. here in the City Council Chambers at 107 West Wan Lins Street.
Thank you. Go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Seeing no one approach, we'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, pretend there's no motion necessary, this is just a public hearing.
Oh, just a hearing, I'm sorry.
No action necessary tonight.
What's the wording on it?
On to C3.
C3 then. C3 is a public hearing on the City of Victoria budget for the fiscal year 2718 on August 24th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. here in the City Council Chambers at 107 West Wan Lins Street.
Okay, this time I open the public hearing. No one approaching the podium, we will close the public hearing and move on to C4.
C4 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the City of Victoria for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending on September 30th, 2018, appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all conflicting ordinances and appropriations, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Open the public hearing on item C4. Seeing no one rise, go to the podium, we will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion for item C4.
Someone?
Second.
We'd like to have some discussion.
Yes, sir.
We've set the tax rate, but to do so, we've had to knock out a lot of maintenance funds, particularly for the streets. I feel personally that that's not a good way for us to do it, and I would propose that we add a penny up to the tax rate designated for streets maintenance.
So a penny would add how much?
About $3.40.
About $360,000.
$3.50.
About $360. And if we were to put $360,000 in the street budget, what would we get for it?
Well, we have to look at what all we dropped when we went through the budget proposal.
Are you proposing for...
That would be this binder here.
Right, right, but proposing for maintenance or rebuild?
Please, mostly it's maintenance we've had to cut out. Let's see what all we had to do.
So that would be what, spring wood was one of the ones that was dropped?
Yeah, we're gonna need, spring wood, we're gonna need 1.2 million or 1.3 million.
$1.6 million total.
Okay.
I have to throw into the mix that I noticed a couple of potholes got filled just today because we're about to have a lot of rain, and that's going to impact our streets and the maintenance that we know of, we're already not able to completely address, and we are about to have a whole lot more that's gonna have to be addressed.
My fear when we look at just if, you know, number one, we'll set the calendar again, which we can do, but I don't know that a penny's gonna have a substantial impact on what we need to do.
Except, doing, not doing it will have a double impact the following year. It always magnifies itself out. I'm trying to keep that as low as possible. Not fixing your roof, before you know it, sheet rock's gone, yada, yada, yada. All right, we can do that, but I don't think we should. I think it'll bite us, and it'll bite us more than double. We can't play catch-up next year and make it work. I think the public asks that we sit here and go through this carefully, with all due diligence, to do the best job we can. I think by removing that maintenance, that's not a good thing, because I know, and you know that...
I know, and I also, I'm concerned about everything that's gonna get...
Absolutely.
Put on the backs of all our taxpayers this year.
But I've never had anyone say anything about the tax rate. I've always had them say, "When are you gonna fix this, or we ain't gonna fix that?"
I know, but Victoria College is going up, we're going up.
We're not Victoria College.
I know, I'm just talking about in totality, right? It'd be easier if we were the only taxing entity. And I look at it, this is, we're only responsible for a portion of it, but also I take a look at the entire thing at the same time. And there's a bond issuance in front of taxpayers as well. I don't know. I just don't think we're gonna get enough bang for the buck out of one penny.
I hear what you're saying, but I don't want us to wait until nobody else is raising their taxes before we say, "Hey, folks, we've got lots of problems, and we've just been, you know." So that argument only goes just so far.
Right, and as we've discussed before too, we have a big bond that we're looking at in six years now?
21.
Five, six, five?
Well, the revenue bonds in 2021.
Yeah, four years.
And then there was 2024.
Yeah, and those are multimillion-dollar fixes. And we're...
I don't know that, I would wish to set our tax rate or our policy by what the ISD does or the county does. I think we have to look at what we're given responsibility for. We're not given responsibility for those other issues. I believe if we act responsibly and clearly, the public is just fine with that. They would like us to sit here and deliberate and discuss these various items and come up with the best possible way of doing things. And I am so convinced that leaving out maintenance that way is gonna bite us big time.
We're not leaving out maintenance with this budget.
As we balance in the budget, using maintenance, not a good idea.
We still have maintenance in there. How much do we have in there for roads, again?
Got me off guard. Residential, we got practically close to, well, including the springwood portion is $3 million, then the reclaim overlay, about another $2 million.
That's what's in the current budget.
Yes, sir. In addition with that, we've got sales tax money, it's another $7 million.
So we have $10 million in our budget.
I think another reality is that we have been relying on sales tax. We've been fortunate, but sales tax is down, and so we're having to absorb some of the sales tax loss from the general fund. And, you know, you can call it whatever you want to call it, or you can attribute the changes in the budget to whatever aspect you want.
What sales tax loss are we absorbing in the general, taking from the general fund to absorb? I don't think that's, we're not robbing from the general fund to fund this budget.
We just had to do cuts because of the decrease in sales tax.
Right, but we're not taking from the general fund to balance our budget.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And that's, that's...
Those are, those are just, okay, so those are other projects that we're having to delay as well.
Yeah, we just shift things around every time we have CIP.
I misspoke, however, the fact is still that the sales tax is, is low, which is impacting other decisions.
And the general fund.
That's 12 years we've gone down on the rate.
As appraisal values have gone up.
The last 12 years we've gone down on the rate.
And the budget has increased.
Yeah, but we went down on the rate. Now comes a time when we need to go back up on that rate. We're going up one cent, I'm proposing an additional cent, two cents. We started at 70 and a half cents, 74 and a half, wasn't it? 70 and a half.
Years ago?
The tax rate, 70 and a half.
72.
My memory's getting fuzzy.
That's, yeah, about 72, and we started dropping down.
But we've come down on that rate. The calculations are faulty by their base because they don't have inflation involved in them. So inflation affects everyone, including the city that has to buy steel, concrete, other things, police cars, fire engines, personnel that want a little bit more money to raise their family on, for the same reason. Inflation affects them. So if you're required by the state to calculate that tax rate, and it doesn't include inflation, then it's faulty on the surface, yet we're still required to do that. So saying that we collected more money is true, without doubt, without doubt. But it's slightly untrue when you didn't create an inflation factor in with it, or take into full consideration the needs and services for additional families moving into as well. It's both, it's true and untrue, but it, you know, to be, get a real clear picture, you need all those factors in there when you say inflation doesn't count. That's not a true picture then.
Oh, but the effective tax calculation is given to us, and I agree, there's no inflationary calculation part of it. But we have increased our budget.
Yeah.
And been able to increase the budget because of higher property tax values, and I think it would be a disservice if we had left it at 72 cents.
We're still struggling to maintain police and fire equitability on pay. That means increase nearly every year. It's gotta come from somewhere. It's not magic. I still think we're, you know, yes, we've raised more money, but so did a car cost more now than it used to, or a house, or anything else. To deny that is not getting the full picture. That's where I'm still going with this. You've got not just the fire trucks, but you've also got all the people and the personnel. So you're gonna live on the same money that you had 20 years ago? Can't do it, it's just not possible. And we need to take that into consideration. Do we raise more money? Yes. Almost every one of those 12 years, we did, almost. But we still went down some years that it was, we raised less. So even that blanket statement wouldn't be totally true. We just, I would urge that we not do this, because we've gone down easily, and everybody was happy when we went down. Constituents said nothing, no one ever came in and said, "Hey, great, y'all went down a penny or two pennies." Instead, they said, "When are you gonna fix this street? When are you gonna fix that street?" They want things done. We can't keep kicking the can down the road, and that's what we've been doing, in my opinion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if we were to adjust it a penny, we would have to start over again with our calendars and stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that, you know, being considering of the economy, I would rather leave it the way it is, because you're talking about a lot of work for Gilbert and his staff, and I would think that, you know, you know, one more year is not going to save all the streets. That's my opinion. I mean, when your budget at home is tight, you don't go spend money that you don't have. You try and save what you do have and work with it.
We do have a revised calendar if we should accept this one penny. Part of the reason I didn't bring it up last meeting is because it wasn't on the agenda, an error that I hope won't happen.
I remember you asked, yes.
But it did happen. So it could have stayed on the same schedule if I brought it up at the last meeting. At this meeting, it basically just moves everything back one week. Think a calendar's already been sent to me so that it would fit.
Yeah, what I was gonna say just a few minutes ago, we kinda need, if there's five of you that wish for the tax rate to go up that extra penny that Mr. Jalapaska's, if we could know that tonight, then we'll bring resolutions back on Tuesday to adjust the calendar, because we don't, we don't have resolu, and we, we can easily adjust the calendar, you know, we'll just move the dates, and we'll end up being at the end of September versus September 12. That's one of the reasons I always give us at least a two-week window there on adopting the budget for things like this. So I still believe we would have had to adjust the calendar anyway, Mr. Jalapaska, because we'd already published the notice on that. But, but, but what, you've got a motion and a second on the floor to vote, the first vote of the budget, which we could still do that tonight, and then, but with Gilbert's taking deep breaths up there, so...
Well, it'd be nice. If council wants to increase the tax rate overall, then you won't vote on the budget.
Don't vote on it?
No, because the calendar, revised calendar includes the whole process again. And on the 30th next week, I just published a notice again, and just moves on forward, and then it just pushes everything to the last week of September.
And that's possible, okay, thank you.
If council decides, as majority, you want to do a tax increase, then it just dies, don't do anything, and we just come back, and it'd be in September, before you have the public hearing again, and then you vote, and everything else.
And we've got time to do that, if that's council's wishes, so, okay, so we need a...
And if the tax rate goes up by another penny, it will, this is a question, will it exceed the effective tax rate?
No.
It's already exceeding the effective tax rate by one penny.
But it doesn't hit the rollback rate.
It doesn't hit the rollback.
I'm not asking about the rollback rate.
Rollback is 61, and we're, and it's bringing it at 60 something, some...
Right, the reason I'm asking about the effective tax rate is because that is what triggers the supermajority vote that, that you've already mentioned, and I want to be clear to everybody that it would require an affirmative vote of five members of council in order to make that change.
And, well, I'm playing lawyer.
In order to adopt...
In order to vote on the tax rate, the first vote, you need the higher percentage, yes.
A supermajority.
But if you want to do a tax rate and come back, you don't need that right now.
Right.
But we need a majority to tell us to do that.
First vote, you need the majority.
What you're saying is if I call a vote on C4, and if there's a 3 to 3 deadlock...
That's the end of it.
But there wasn't a supermajority to go to a higher tax rate?
You still have to have, your tax rate right now is a penny higher than effective tax rate. You still have to have majority, is it 60%?
Yes.
Of the council has to vote yes, no matter what.
On the budget.
On the first penny or the second penny, you still have to do, on the vote. We're not voting on the tax rate today.
Okay.
We're voting on the budget. It's two different things. So if you come back, if you go with the old calendar, which is the 29th, that vote on the tax rate, it's gonna be one penny, no matter what, you still have to have 6% of the vote yes.
But, and I know we're talking through this, the dais, which is not necessarily a really good thing from a business meeting, but anyway, if, if there's not five people sitting up here tonight willing to raise the tax rate another penny, it would be nice if we had that, we knew that, because we'd know where to go forward next. So that's what I would like. If we could get a show of who is in favor of moving forward, it's not a formal vote, but...
I've heard two people speak against it.
I felt very comfortable going up with the one penny. The two pennies, I, I understand the maintenance, and I understand the, the argument and discussion behind it. And with all due respect, Gilbert, I know there's a calendar, but I don't really care about the calendar. I just don't think we're getting enough bang for the buck. Economy the way it is, I feel comfortable enough going up for that penny, but I, I can't, I can't vote yes on the, on the second penny right at this point.
So that's three that have said no, so I think you, we've got our answer.
So just go forward as the budget.
All right, is any other discussion on the budget for this item C4?
I would want to ask, Councilman Solis said that this would throw a lot more work on you, Gilbert, is that true?
I don't want to contradict the council. How about both of y'all being yes and right, both of y'all?
We're, we're here to serve. We will do whatever work it takes.
I'm sorry I have to answer that way.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on item C4. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, C4 passed. We have nothing on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, we do have an additional item in Section, I'm sorry.
Is it a resolution?
No, I'm sorry, that is a resolution. We, it's later in the agenda, I'm gonna speak out of turn.
So we're gonna go to resolutions right now, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that we were not gonna talk about the hot funds tonight, just due to the storm and time. And we did have an emergency addendum that was at it. It's Resolution E5. If you go ahead and take care of that for us.
That is a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a notice to proceed on the pre-storm contract for disaster recovery services with Ashbread Incorporated, and on disaster and/or storm recovery monitoring and services contract with Tetra Tech Incorporated, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion on the contract? Only thing I have to ask, go ahead, Mr. Solis.
How long would they stay? Did they clear up the whole mess?
It'll just depend on how we need, and, and thank you for that question, because it'll let me explain a little bit. The current contract for us to activate, these two contracts require council approval, and so what we're asking is if we need to get Ashbread in here during the weekend, you're giving me the authority to give them a notice to proceed, that yes, they will, they will stay and do as much work as we need to do. So there, but once we call them in, we, we put them on notice to come on in, the charges start. So we, we want to do that at the last possible minute, but they will do debris removal. Daryl, Daryl can talk about what all they will do for us, but yes.
Good evening. It's part of this contract, debris removal is the biggest thing, but then also built into that contract is charges that we set several years ago when I brought this to you for pumps, for any type of things that the city also needs, they can deliver to us, fuel, different things like that. And they would start, this would allow our crews to go back to picking up and getting our folks back to a normal life, so that we can pick up garbage and recycling and things while they're taking care of the headaches that we have left from the storm.
You know if they would go in there and put pumps like under the underpasses, because I know those get full of water?
Most of the underpasses are gonna be handled by Tech Dot, and those are, those won't be, I believe, our responsibility. Tech Dot will handle clearing the roads in that are their responsibility, is my understanding.
And then also part of our emergency management team, we have a public works section, and so any things that are going on with the roads that we need to take care of, we have a team ready to deploy and make those decisions on whether we need stuff from Ashbread, you know, pumps and generators and things like that, so...
So if we need some water be pumped somewhere that's pretty high, we can call you? I'm talking about Ben Wilson.
Sure. Ms. Solis, you can call me.
I will call you.
There's always that service request form.
Yeah.
Just the last thing, the monitoring... Contract is a requirement of FEMA, so that, we have to have them monitoring what the construction company is doing in order to be able to get reimbursed by FEMA. It also allows us to be in a little higher reimbursement bracket with FEMA.
Okay. I've seen a lot of emergency management vehicles out, so that's good.
Been a busy day.
Yes.
The state's got, has deployed resources here, so there, there's a lot going on. But you know, you do talk about that high water, you know, that old say, and turn around, don't drown. We need to make sure people are not driving in, on roads that have water across them. So it's a good reminder.
Yes, absolutely. The, I was gonna talk about safety and, and people being brave and waiting it out, and we talked about the mandatory evacuation, substandard housing in low-lying areas, but, but please, take heed, our emergency personnel have to come in and save people, you put them at risk as well. So it's not just your life on the line, it's other people's lives on the line that have families, so...
And I don't have the numbers committed to memory, OC might, but at a certain level of wind speed, we will stop responding. 45, okay, so we will stop responding, so when calls come into dispatch, they will be told that, we're in that sustain, we're in that period that we cannot respond. So again, it's important that everybody listen and pay attention. All of our information is on our website, on our Facebook, that's being updated, so I would encourage everybody to check our website.
The last time they ordered emergency evacuation, mandatory evacuation, many people felt like they did not have a choice but had to leave. And perhaps it would be worthwhile if we gave an explanation of what mandatory evacuation truly means. It means that we're not gonna come out and help you if the wind speed gets up very high. You can stay, it's still your choice.
That's exactly right.
But many people came to me afterwards, said, "I had to leave, they told me it's mandatory evacuation." That's not truly what it means. It means we can't help you and won't help you.
Mr. Jalapaska, I hate to correct a council member from the dais, but the mandatory evacuation contains criminal...
contains criminal penalties for people who do not leave. The judge and the mayor are very serious when they say that citizens of the city and county need to evacuate if they at all can. I don't want, I don't want your comments to be misinterpreted as encouraging people to stick around if they have the ability to stick around.
Not completely, but you're not gonna be arrested if you choose to stay.
I don't, I'm not gonna comment on an officer's discretion in the field, but the mandatory evacuation does create criminal penalties for people who do not leave. It is very important that citizens hear the message that they need to evacuate. This is a very serious storm. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion on this item, call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Passes. With that, we're into the city manager reports. We don't have any. Does anybody have anything they want to go through on the budget or tax rate? We have a workshop scheduled if anybody'd like to do anything specific with it.
I'm sorry, my computer's off.
All right. Not our next meeting will be on Tuesday.
The 29th.
The 29th, 5:00 p.m. Please, everybody be safe, pay attention, and take care of yourself. Thank you.
I didn't realize that they had to leave.